Item number one, review of past meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
I reviewed them. I approve.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Item number two, public hearing. Oh, excuse me, I'm reading the wrong one. Election of officers. Zach, you want to catch us up on who all has terms expiring this coming spring?
Sure. And for the record, Zachariah Hack, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. The staff acknowledges that last year in 2019, it was April when the Historic Landmarks Commission voted for election of officers. So, but our policy with the department is, as best as we can, is to do new elections at the beginning of each year. So that's why you see it on tonight's agenda, being the first meeting of the new year. With that said, there are four commissioners that have terms expiring at the end of March. So at the end of next month. Those are Rachel, Dennis, Kelly, and Chris.
My God. It wasn't working before.
You're distracting me.
Not me.
So.
Dennis.
Rachel, Dennis, Kelly, and Chris.
Well, we're not all gone unless we decide to stay.
Yeah.
Yay, you did.
Maybe you should go down the end because it's really weird.
Oh, squeeze in.
Yeah, you should go to the end because that sugar is very odd.
It's odd.
Thanks for the name.
Are we talking about this?
Yeah, why don't you?
We'll sit together.
No, no. I think it's broken or it could be operator error.
All right, so while Dennis gets settled, just to set the table, for the four members, if tonight, if we can understand your interest or not in continuing on for another term, we will coordinate that with the Board of County Commissioners. Nick will talk a little bit more about that. But once we have an idea of who may be interested in renewing their term, we can move forward with election of officers, if that is the next logical step in the process.
If I can just say, commissioners, if anybody is thinking about, and I think we know of one potentially, but if anybody's not interested in being reappointed, if you can just let us know in the next couple of days so that we can initiate a recruitment, since the term, I think it goes until March 31st.
Correct.
I won't have an opportunity to check in with the board. I'll just initiate the recruitment because we don't want to miss a beat with the commission. And so it's just helpful if anybody has any thoughts because it's with four commissioners, that's a big number.
Sign me up again.
Given that there are six or seven, there are six now, I think.
Six total.
Five, yeah.
Five, six voting.
Six.
Five appointed and one ex officio.
Yeah, and I have decided not to sit for another term. Voting member anyway, so, okay.
And this is Kelly, and I will stay on as another ex officio for another year.
Are there terms, four years, right? Or two? Four? I'll sign up for another four.
And I think, was it, is it Commissioner Smith, the other one that has the term expiring, is that right? So, and if you were to make that choice and let us know either way, then I would coordinate with Patrick. If you chose not to.
Right.
But either way, we'll coordinate with the city, either for a reappointment or for them to initiate when you're ready to make that choice.
I'd serve another four years, but I'd like a couple of days to confirm that.
Sure.
That sounds great. Good. We just thought with four commissioners with terms up this year, and we knew of one commissioner, as we appoint officers, as you elect officers, it's just helpful to know that going in.
And if I may, Commissioner Madden, of course, this would need to be confirmed by the Board of County Commissioners, but do you have an interest in becoming a voting member?
Sure. And then that was somebody, if they want to step down and be ex officio, they can, because it's, I think sometimes it's a good role because sometimes you can say something and you're not voting, so it's a good thing. Okay, I'll do that.
We will initiate a recruitment for one position at least, and coordinate with the Board of County Commissioners on what their objectives are for the future of the commission as well. And does it make sense now to vote for officer positions, chair, vice chair, and secretary?
We're just missing one, Commissioner Leckey. You have four. It's up to you. I mean, if you'd rather wait until...
Well, Kelly's going, she just said.
No, I said.
You're leaving.
I will not be here after March 31st.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. She's gone.
Sure. Yeah, okay.
Would you come back as ex officio at some point?
I would.
Yeah?
Yeah.
So you're right, if the commission would prefer to wait until March or April, it's not in your code like it is in the planning commission. It's in code, and the Board of County Commissioners does it at their first meeting each year. And if that works for this commission, great. And if you'd rather wait for another month to have some more finality, that's fine too.
I think that would be better for us to have that.
Great.
Who has the, excuse, this is Kelly talking. Who has the, who's the vice chair right now?
Commissioner Leckey.
Sharon. And then who's the secretary?
Me.
Dennis.
I do nothing. A good position. I'd take it again, as it matters.
Just so that I don't get elected to chair, vice chair, I'd rather have a secretary position if Dennis doesn't want it.
Oh, we're early.
He delegates it to Zach.
Yeah. Dennis and I have an agreement. So, something to consider over the next month. So, if you're interested in serving or who a good nominee may be. We do have, as I'll explain later tonight, at least one fairly significant topic that will that will involve the HLC making a formal decision and recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners that will include a public hearing. So, something to think about. I'm not anticipating it being contentious, but it is a formal process.
But you need a formal motion to defer elections until the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
When's the next meeting?
As it is now, it's scheduled for March 2nd, a month.
I would move we table the election of officers for 2020 until our next meeting, March 2nd.
Second thought?
I'll favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Good morning, here. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I was going to provide you with an update on the Rules Advisory Committee for the National Register. For the record, Peter Gatawski, Deschutes County Planning. So this was, came unexpectedly. The Association of Oregon Counties reached out to me asking if I would submit my name for consideration on the Rules Advisory Committee that's, that would be convening to update rules that describe the process, rules that describe the process, the procedures for nominations to the National Register. And ultimately, I was selected. And in your packet, I wrote a very brief memorandum that lists the committee members, and you may know many of these individuals. I thought it was noteworthy to acknowledge that Craig Harrell, with Central Oregon Irrigation District, is a member. You have, I think, a normal set of representatives, you have someone from Thousand Friends of Oregon, Mary Kyle McCurdy, who, one of her primary roles as Deputy Director for that organization is to be on Rules Advisory Committees, and certainly tracking legislation that's being contemplated by the legislature. But you have the League of Oregon Cities as well, Michael Boquett, he's a Planning Director from the City of La Grande. And so...
What is the Kramer and Company, what does that...
He is a historic preservationist. He may be an architect. He's in Southern Oregon, yeah, exactly.
He does a lot of work for agency.
He was, yeah, he was very, very engaged on the 28th, the first meeting. So I thought what I would do is share with you, kind of recap the five and a half hour meeting that took place on the 28th. And then, their next meeting is February 10th, and when I return on the 10th, just as I do with the Board of County Commissioners, I will send you an email, just recapping the meeting. Meetings are open to the public, and it's interesting, the members of the public that participated were proponents from the East Moreland neighborhood. You may all have been tracking this, this was news to me, but last... In Portland, it's a neighborhood that has an incredible amount of historic homes, some are...
Is it by the Reed College?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And, so in any event, the, just as we had, as this commission, certainly the board and staff experienced the, what I'll call the weaponization of the national nomination for irrigation districts. Interestingly, in the East Moreland District, it was weaponized to prevent a listing, and I'll describe why. And you may have, it's been reported in the paper, but I was unfamiliar with it, but the East Moreland District, excuse me, the East Moreland neighborhood, a majority of residents, about 60, 40, wanted to have it nominated on the National Register. And I suspect... A certain section of the neighborhood, I don't know the exact geographic boundaries. And I suspect some of that is due to the fact that there are, you know, colonial Tudor, English cottage types of homes, so it definitely has the attributes that warrant it, but I also think there's a lot of infill development and density that's coming into that neighborhood that is disrupting, in many people's perspectives, the character of the neighborhood. And so, in any event, opponents of the district, and there were, Thousand Friends of Oregon was a party to that, Mary Kyle McCurdy was a party to that, as I understand, they exploited the definition of owner and created a series of trusts on individual properties. So they inflated, that's my word, in many respects, they inflated the number of qualifying owners, and raised questions about whether or not there was a majority in support of the district. And the State Historic Preservation Office, I think, was caught in a very awkward position, similar to what we experienced on the other side for, you know, parties that were proposing irrigation, two irrigation districts for the National Register. In any event, as I understand it, the State Historic Advisory Committee recommended that it be listed, but we had some concerns about ownership, and the federal government just, they said, "You're going to have to figure this out. We think there's some procedural errors, we're not sure who the owners are, you're going to have to remedy this." And so this ties back to the first meeting on the 28th. We spent, I'd say, two hours just kind of table setting, you know, what's the purpose of the committee, the role of the Rural Advisory Committee. We just make recommendations, as I think you probably know, to the State Historic Preservation Office, yes, Commissioner?
What was that term, the weaponization of what?
Well, that's my turn, the weaponization of the national nomination process. So what I meant by that is, in our case, the irrigation, you know, you had, you had, you know, the Central Oregon Irrigation District with Central Oregon Canal, the Pilot Butte Canal, they used the definition of owner.
Right.
Which is fee title, it doesn't include holders of an easement, and they mobilized, and ultimately were successful. The last, as you know, the Central Oregon Canal was mediated, and they are settled, so, you know, maybe the weaponization really is more directly applicable to the Pilot Butte Canal. But the weaponization for East Moreland was this, they created a series of trusts for individual properties, and as soon as the matter tabled, I was told offhand that the trusts were dissolved.
So, I have a question.
Yes.
In the Fed's view, is the trust status of the property, does that blur the owner?
They, as I understand it, well, we talked on the 28th, we, so the first two hours were table setting, kind of orientation, and the bulk of the rest of the time was on, we started going through sequentially through the document, and you start pretty much right at definitions. We spent 90 minutes on owner.
Really?
And the Representative George Kramer was very, very active, and had some strong opinions. The draft rule, and it's not redlined, does limit the applicability of a trust. And I was gonna, and so I think the answer to your question, Commissioner, is that I think the federal government is looking for the state to take a leadership role to define it. And there's some, I know the Federal Register, I think it's, you know, there are rules, but regulations, but in some respect, they may be almost like guidelines, where there's some flexibility. But in any event, the Rural Advisory Committee recommended, and I was going to read it to you, that as it pertains to who can have a, who has standing to make a, to weigh their vote on an ownership issue for the purpose of a national nomination, the RAC directed, the Rural Advisory Committee directed the State Historic Preservation Staff to add a definition to owner that clarifies that an owner, or multiple owners of one property, one legal lot, relating to a national nomination, only gets one vote. So if all of us have a trust for one large property, one legal lot, we would have to work together and vote amongst ourselves to determine what do we... Instead of having all of us vote. And there is a definition in your packet, if you're...
A shield.
On your, in your, in your packet, in the rules that I provided to you, just on page three, under owner, owner does not include, this is Sub G, owner is N, and so if you have it there on page three, N is owners, and then Sub G is, does not include trust or other ownership arrangement that do not serve a traditional trust or ownership purpose. So, we thought, or I think that I was really deferential here, but it was overwhelmingly the sense of defining what it means to be an owner for those circumstances where, you know, multiple tax lots on one legal lot. So, we'll see, the State Historic Preservation Office is going to come back and share with us these kind of revised versions for us to examine. But it was fascinating to hear about East Moreland, and you can still, if you do a search on any website, you can get the Willamette Weekly and the Oregonian reporting on it, so I would recommend that. The other piece that is, that was, that I thought was noteworthy, and it's really, I think, primarily why I'm on this Rural Advisory Committee, is there's a provision in the rule that hasn't been discussed yet, it will likely be discussed on February 10th, but we wanted to get to the definition first. And so, I'm going to turn your attention on page 10, and this is, this is, pertains to the role of the, this is the, it's leveraging the certified local government and the ability to object to a nomination. So, on page 10, it's 12, I'm not going to cite the rule, but if you have 12 Sub C, did you guys see that there? I thought I would read it to you. And this is where you have an objection. So the State Historic Preservation Office must remove the historic resource from consideration for listing in the National Register, or the consideration of a substantive revision for a National Register nomination form for a property listed in the National Register, and take no further action from the date that SHPO receives written objections from, one, the Local Landmarks Commission, and, so it's conjunctive, or it's conjoined, so it has actions by both entities, it says the chief elected official. And there's a definition for chief elected official, and what the Rural Advisory Committee did, because we didn't, we wanted to clarify that a mayor, or a chairperson, or a judge on a county commission, they individually don't have the ability to object, but what we wanted to make sure that they represent a majority of the governing body. So the definition of chief elected official is going to acknowledge that obligation. So again, that a mayor couldn't just, you know, overturn a majority of he or she's, his or hers colleagues on city council. Now, Sub C will be likely be discussed on February 10th, and I wouldn't be surprised if there is a recommendation by the RAC, by the Rural Advisory Committee, that asks for a specific addition for objections. And this is pertaining to, so this is language, Sub C is language coming straight from the State Historic Preservation Office. It honors the Landmarks Commission, and essentially gives the Landmarks Commission the ability to veto or to negate the actions of a governing body, which is really rare for an advisory body, because typically, this commission, and other commissions like it, whether they're in land use, the Planning Commission, or whatnot, you advise the elected officials, you advise the Board of County Commissioners. The addition would be, allow the chief elected officer, as represented by a majority of the governing body, to be able to object and to remove a nomination irrespective of the Landmarks Commission, only when it pertains to infrastructure, nominations that relate to infrastructure. And I think this is something that's worth talking about. We've seen infrastructure with the irrigation districts, but there are, I think there are, I'll give you, it's a hypothetical, and admittedly not all that realistic, but somebody could say, "I want Wall Street downtown to be on the National Register. It's a historic street, it's two lanes, it binds downtown, I don't want it to change, it has all these characteristics." And that, I think, could bind a local government when they're dealing with improving the street, when a city eventually modernizes. So, I'm not saying that would happen, but I think there's some concerns about, you know, what if there's a transmission line that happens to dovetail with an old wagon trail? I mean, we have this infrastructure there, and it should be, to the extent that infrastructure is under a jurisdiction, that it should be the local government that has the ability, excuse me, it should be the governing body that determines how they want to address a nomination in relation to infrastructure. Because as we all know, once you get the, once it's listed on the National Register, it's very difficult to, you know, make modernization, or do modernization, and still demonstrate, you know, you're not undermining the resource. So, I think that's something that's going to come up. I think with that type of addition, it would not diminish, or necessitate modifying the Sub C, because I think it's, to be a certified local government, to have a Landmarks Commission, you're honoring the knowledge that you have, that the governing body doesn't have, and to some extent, the staff doesn't have. And I think having that ability to kind of ensure that a nomination, even if the elected officials disagree, that it can still go to the state, is probably, you can make an argument, that that's still noteworthy. But I think the difference is, if it's related to infrastructure. And when I had the conversation with another Rural Advisory Committee member, because that's the perspective, I think, of staff, of, you know, at the local level, is that we need to ensure that the nomination isn't what I'm calling weaponized, or undermining the challenges associated with infrastructure. I know there's a difference between the irrigation district, but just, that was a very controversial, yes, Commissioner?
When you discuss the term "infrastructure" in your field, in the community development, does that have a specific meaning of certain things, or is that just basic infrastructure that everyone's thinking about? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's a great question, and I think it will have to be defined, to the extent that this issue is, has some broad support. But I mean, when I think of infrastructure at the local level, you're thinking about roads, you're thinking about water, centralized water and sewer, you might include, I mean, this is local government, so it could include... Well, not necessarily garbage, but it could include canals, it could include utility lines, transmission lines, gas lines. So, I think, I think this is something that's going to be worth having a conversation about, and I think, what I gather, talking to...
Do cell towers fall on that?
Cell towers are not necessarily owned by municipalities, I guess they could, but that would be, you know...
Oh, so it's things owned by municipalities?
Or that are in their right of way, or that are under their jurisdiction, I think, is what I...
Right.
Yeah. Go ahead, Commissioner.
What does it say, follow that line? I remember we had a question about that several years ago on the city, because they said, you know, a cell tower could come in and put one right in Drake Park.
Right.
And how would we stop that? And it was our decision, was that we could at least oppose.
Right. Yes, so, it was interesting, and I'm giving you just some inside baseball here, but when I was talking to a representative on the Rural Advisory Committee, who's very much a proponent of East Moreland, and the sense is, going back to East Moreland, is that once these rules, if these rules are ultimately adopted, that in their case, address the trust issue, East Moreland is going to nominate again. And there was a sense from this advocate, that he didn't want a nomination, a genuine nomination, I'm not, and let's just focus on a residential historic district, where you have a majority of property owners who want the nomination to be considered, that a local government, a local governing body shouldn't honor their own, have the ability to object and remove that for consideration. Because a majority have supported it, and that it warrants review at the state, and then presumably, if it's successful, the state to go to the federal. The difference that we were talking about is, what do you deal with, how do you deal with infrastructure? And that might be a way, again, of parsing the seas, where, again, when you have what I would call, under the spirit of the national nomination process under the register, I don't think anyone thought of what I'm calling the weaponization of the rule. It was broadly thought of, oh my gosh, there's going to be broad scale support, it's going to be a historic structure, or site, or feature, that... that a majority, overwhelming majority, support, and then it warrants consideration at the local state and presumably at the federal level. And of course, here we are in the 21st century, and things are much more nuanced and complicated. So that's the issue that I'm trying to figure out how to navigate while still honoring the integrity of this system.
I just have one more quick little question. You mentioned the term "a genuine nomination." Is there any discussion with your group about identifying non-genuine nominations? And so then, when they come up, you just say, hey, that's non-genuine, get out? Because...
It's a good question. The language was mine. They were calling it, the Chair and others on the committee, they were calling it "happy nominations." Where happy nominations are what I've just described. You know, it's like, oh my gosh, it's, you know, Drake Park, or it's something where everybody understands the value of this. And then there's the antithesis, which is the unhappy nominations that have this division and...
For ulterior motives.
Yeah, for ulterior motives. And so I certainly, you know, and I, please know, I, before I attended on January 28th, I checked in with the Board of County Commissioners. Because ultimately, I report to them, and I need to make sure that my involvement at the committee is reflecting their kind of policy approach. And so we talked about the definition of owner, but really talked about the importance of having some local control by the governing body when you have these circumstances, these unhappy ulterior motive. I think it's more infrastructure-related, where I think, you know, if you put in a provision that dealt with it, as I've described, I think that would meet the intent of what I think the Board is really interested in, is to make sure that there's not these ulterior motives and that it's not undermining other values that, you know, a community is wrestling with. So that's the, that's the, kind of, the challenge that I'm in, is I'm trying to thread this circumstance in a way that, again, honors the National Register and the process for, you know, for a feature that really has a legitimate majority support. But at the same time, we can address these other circumstances that have happened periodically in Oregon and else, I gather, they're happening outside of the state as well. But to do it in a way where the governing body has the ability to respectfully object on their own, not to diminish a Landmarks Commission's recommendation, which would still be important to here, but if the governing body and these narrow issues felt that, you know, a roadway didn't deserve that national designation for fear that it couldn't be modernized over time or improved over time, then they could make that call in a way that still valued the process, but allowed for infrastructure improvements to be considered at the local level. So does that, I'm interested in your thoughts. Does that seem reasonable? Or does, do you have concerns, or...
This is Kelly, this is Kelly Madden. Peter, do they look to you to answer questions? Because you've been through a process, a unique process in the state of Oregon with this canal stuff? Or is this popping up all over, or...
There's been two examples. There's the East Moreland example on one side, and then our experience on the other. So I think they, and it was, I was referenced, or the county was referenced several times. Because, as this commission experienced firsthand, not only, you know, not just initial nomination, but there were reconsiderations. So I certainly believe that the State Historic Preservation Office wants the rules to address what localities are experiencing today so that there can be a realistic program.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's excellent. Thank you for doing that.
I think infrastructure is, that's a wide-ranging label.
Right, it would, the infrastructure term was my term. It hasn't been vetted. It would, you know, I, yeah. I mean, I think it's worthy of a conversation, and we'll see where it goes. I know that, again, I'm trying to, in the conversation I had offline with this other committee member, we were trying to reach multiple audiences. And instead of, you know, I would be, I'm hopeful that if we could get a narrow definition of infrastructure as a starting point, that it would allow for the remedies potentially of having an objection that could be utilized, if necessary, by a governing body, and preserve the way C is written now. If it's not, then what, it will put me in an awkward position because I will have to put on record that I think it's going to be important for local control in coordination with the county commissioners, that the governing body has the ability to object and remove on their own. Because it's no different than at the state process, or, excuse me, at the local process. We had a nomination to put it on our, put on a, something on our historic inventory. It would start here with a public hearing. This body would recommend, make a recommendation. But ultimately, presuming, you know, all the rest of the procedures and the qualifications all square up, it would be up to the Board to determine if they want to add it to a comprehensive plan and regulate alterations or demolitions or whatnot, or modifications under our code. So that's what I'm trying to avoid. And just having the brief conversation, I thought, wow, that was a, that might be a good way of honoring both set of circumstances, recognizing, again, what Sub C, I think, is getting to is a nomination that, you know, is coming up forward genuinely my term, where a majority of property owners are focusing on a structure or a site as opposed to infrastructure.
Let's say you have a, I'm going to make this up.
Yeah, please.
Say you have a town with a Western theme.
Uh-huh.
They've got boardwalks.
Right.
No sidewalks. But the town decides, because of the snow issues, let's have electrified sidewalks. What do you do? It's infrastructure.
Right, and if that, and just to be clear, if that section, if that corridor was nominated as a National Register, you know, under the concept that I'm introducing, the local government, the governing body, would have the ability to say, do we want to have it on the register, knowing that snow removal is going to be more arduous than it might otherwise if it could be modernized? So that would be a consequence of it. But it would, you're right, it may not, it may get nitpicked to death. And we'll see where the Rules Advisory Committee goes on it. But I think it's worth, I think it's worth a discussion. And then, depending on what happens, you know, collectively, just representing Deschutes County, we'll have to, you know, you know, offer some perspectives on Sub C. But in any event, like I said, I will keep you all informed. There's four meetings that are scheduled. This is really owner, the definition of owner, which is still ongoing. And this specific provision, I think, are really the largest sticking points. If you, as you review the draft rules, it gets into procedures and how you notify parties and whatnot. And I think, you know, I'm going to rely on the rest of the committee to kind of scrutinize those. I think the rest of it will go relatively smoothly.
And I want to beat this to death, because it's very interesting. Bring it home, then. So Bend, our historic neighborhood. This would essentially what we're doing, that's what they're proposing on a larger scale.
You're talking about East Moreland?
Yeah.
I don't know the boundary of East Moreland. I think it was, I gather...
The concept's the same, though. They want to identify his historic neighborhood.
Correct.
Which is very real, so now it's coming home.
Yeah.
We challenged the city of Bend when they put that boulevard down between Drake Park.
Uh-huh.
And they essentially told us to go suck air.
Right, and that would be, I think...
That was kind of the same.
Well, and I think, again, I don't have really any experience when it comes to these nominations, but it may have been the way the district was defined. And it may have been the private property, the homes that garnished the full protection under the National Register. And the city may have had right of way. And the right of way itself was not part of the nomination. And through their own legal analysis, they felt like they can modernize. The difference that I'm pointing out is if someone said, "Street X is so significant, it should be on the National Register." You know, that's where I think the governing body needs to be the final, you know, decision-maker at the local level to determine if that's warranted. Because infrastructure changes and, you know, the way we use, in this example, roads change. And so that's how I'm trying to distinguish between the two. Interesting, going back to East Moreland, and then I'll close, unless there are further questions. It sounds like what's, the reason why there was opposition is there's owners that see, so the East Moreland neighborhood, the homes, as I understand it, may fall on three legal lots of record. And so that the city has recognized, these are three, like, platted lots. And so if you demolished a house that wasn't protected, you could build on three lots. And some of these houses, I was told, are worth well over a million dollars, but the...
They've got big lots.
So you've got the ability to do infill. And I think, in Thousand Friends of Oregon's perspective, they're an organization that doesn't, that doesn't, right, just doesn't support sprawl, and they're promoting infill. And so they're seeing historic preservation at the national level as a constraint on the ability to densify neighborhoods. Now, that comes at the other side, where you have, I think, neighbors who are genuinely interested. This is a beautiful neighborhood. It has some of the characteristics that we're familiar with here by Drake Park. It warrants protection because it represents so many historic values in a period of time in our community. And while, yes, it might be seen as elitist, this is, we need to protect these areas because of the history and the quality of the architecture, et cetera. So it is that dynamic tension that often materializes in places that are growing and, you know, and there's so many, there's so much investment. But those, that's the tension right there.
Isn't Dunsborough in Portland, isn't that on the National Register?
Commissioner, I don't know.
Okay, because I think it is, and I think they're having, as you referred to, infill or chopping up lots for density access.
Yeah, I mean, for...
Is getting to be a really contentious issue there.
I wouldn't be surprised, you know, many neighborhoods in and around Portland and throughout the state that where it's attractive, you're coming into this conflict. And so it's not for me to determine, I gather that the national nomination was not being armored to prevent infill, but maybe the opponents would say otherwise. But it was, they went through a legit, what I would call a legitimate process to gather the number of affected properties owners, only to experience then these hundreds of trusts coming in on select properties. And they were saying, hey, whoa, 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 you don't have a majority. And they created enough confusion to temper it for now.
Wow. Amazing.
So...
Attorneys.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah. And as Landmarks Commissioners and your staff, we're kind of caught in the middle. Anyway, I will keep you informed. I'll send you emails. And then at your next meeting, I'll give you an update as well, but...
I wanted to say, I do think that using the word "happy" and "unhappy" is probably not a very good word. I think, I don't know, genuine and not genuine does sound, but then I guess they're both subjective, right?
And that was just anecdotal.
Right.
It's not anywhere in the rule, it's just...
Right.
It's just the, I think, when the National Register was first promulgated, again, it was thought of, I thought of, look, these are, it's going to be obvious. You're going to know it when you see it. It's not going to be these, I think the Chair noted it well. It's not going to be, it's not going to be these alternative motives. Now, you might have a disagreement in the neighborhood, which you may have had here in Bend, but it's going to be over the substance of the neighborhood, and you're going to have differences of agreement. Not this issue of, you know, using the rules in ways that no one ever contemplated to meet an end goal, so...
Well, at this point, you're just fine-tuning gray area.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you're adding more interpretation to it, but setting boundaries.
Right. Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, that's very interesting.
All right.
Go ahead, Zach. Item four.
Item four, so, again, for the record, Zechariah Hack, associate planner with the Community Development Department. This agenda item pertains to 2017 Oregon Administrative Rule amendments to the Goal Five, statewide planning Goal Five, historic preservation. So tonight, we have a work session on forthcoming amendments in front of the Historic Landmarks Commission. Before I begin, I'd like to set the table on what's to come. So tonight, we have our first work session on these amendments. The amendments are quite broad and cover a lot of different topics. Some of them are minor, others are more significant. And so tonight, I hope, just to provide you a brief overview of what we're looking at and what's to come. The next Historic Landmarks Commission meeting is scheduled for March 2nd. And during that meeting, I plan to have a more specific matrix or some sort of documentation or graphic to provide the Historic Landmarks Commission that really looks at the specific changes that are necessary or that staff is proposing. And then, potentially, if the timeline, as envisioned, materializes for the May HLC meeting, we will hold a public hearing. And again, this is not a topic that we're anticipating will be controversial. It should be fairly straightforward, but also something that's important and is a relatively significant update to historic preservation codes and the model ordinance. I believe the last model ordinance that DLCD provided was, oh, I think, the date escapes me off the top of my head right now, but well over a decade, if not, and two decades old. So it's something I think that's, in some ways, worthy of celebrating, that Deschutes County is updating our code and bringing it into the 21st century. Yeah, so that is, that's what's to come. Again, tonight is just a high-level overview of these proposed amendments. Feel free to interject with any questions or comments you may have during this presentation. And I do have a PowerPoint that will sort of provide an overview. But just so you know, it's bullet points, really, if you can probably best refer to your meeting packet. I provided a lot of information here. And, let's see, it all starts on the Goal Five memo. If you could just follow that, you'll track along with my, what I'll be talking about in my presentation. All right, so a quick background. In 2017, as I just alluded to, the Department of Land Conservation and Development... In 2017, as I just alluded to, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, they decided it was, they identified a need to update the Oregon Administrative Rules pertaining to Goal Five historic resources. The goals were to make them more clear and usable, update and amend definitions, provide clear distinction between procedural steps, and more detail regarding a review of applications to demolish or relocate National Register resources. These amendments were adopted in February of 2017. And even though our, the Deschutes County's historic preservation code does not speak to these amendments, they, because they are in the OARs, they are applicable throughout the state, even if the local code doesn't necessarily mirror the exact language. So, they've, in effect, been the law of the land since February 2017. And then, as the commission is well aware, we received a CLG grant from SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, in April of last year. And one of the main items that we recognize as a goal for our grant cycle was to update our comprehensive plan and our development code to incorporate the latest OAR amendments, as well as a, really, just housekeeping items to update our comprehensive plan. I'll speak to that in more detail later. And most recently, in October of last year, SHPO finally produced a model ordinance. This was something that they had been working on for a while. And they shared, in our CLG workshops in the past two years, that it was slowly coming together. And so, October, they finally released it. I was able to get ahold of it and review it. And that is provided in your meeting packet. As you can see, it's quite lengthy. So, that sort, that sequence of events has set the table for us gathering today and discussing these future amendments. Attached to my memo in your meeting packet are three attachments I want to note. The first is the 2019 model ordinance. I also included Deschutes County Code, Chapter 2.28, the Historic Preservation Ordinance. I also included SHPO and DLCD's Planning for Historic Preservation in Oregon, which, as an appendix, includes the Oregon Administrative Rule, the amended rule, 660, Division 23, Section 200. I will, for a future note, I will have extra copies of these, but ideally, if you can, if you can bring this packet or this memo to our next couple of meetings, that would be, that'd be something good to do, because we may be referring to several pages within this model ordinance and whatnot.
Good to read.
Yeah, lots of reading material for you.
Thank you, Zach.
All right, so now, I'll go through a high-level summary of the 2017 amendments, starting with the more minor ones, and then we'll get to the more significant ones later. The first is collection of data. This, the amended rule in 2017 removed a requirement for the county to provide, quote, "broad public notice prior to collection of information." This amended rule specifically pertained to collecting data and determining adequacy of information collected specifically for historic resource inventories. So, this is not something that we've seen too often. And we do, Deschutes County's code does have really prescriptive requirements for public notice. So, as, from what I understand, DLCD recognized that this was redundant and not all that necessary, so they removed language relating to historic resource inventories and collection of that data. Another item is refusal to consent. And I'll admit, I'm still, well, and I'll say for all of these, I'm still learning all of these. Some of them are somewhat nuanced and seem fairly minor, but how they, how the rubber meets the road, I've been scratching my head on a couple of them, but fortunately, in contact with our SHPO representatives to fully understand each one of these items. So, refusal to consent involves a situation that DLCD recognized there was an erroneous implementation of the owner consent statute in state law. Before, my understanding, the amendment, the 120-day delay before demolition of a site was specific to a landmark that was already under, or identified in a Goal Five inventory. And DCLD, or DLCD, recognized that this was a misinterpretation of the rule and that a property, a situation could come up where a property is really only nominated, or has an application to be part of the Goal Five inventory, is not formally designated. But that 120-day rule for owner consent applies in those situations, not necessarily one where it's already on the books and there's, needs to be a delay for that. So, through this process, we'll make sure that our code just clearly specifies what the latest update says. The next item is consent regarding a majority of property owners. The HLC is familiar with this, as Peter Gutowski just mentioned with our canal nominations. When you have a historic district nomination, you typically have several property owners. This rule revision further defined owner and recognized that it is a simple majority of property owners that can consent or object to a nomination of their property. Removal of resource from inventory. The 2017 amended rule provides specific circumstances under which the county may remove a locally designated resource. They are as follows. The first being owner consent was not adequately obtained. Second, the resource has lost qualities for which it was originally recognized. Third, additional information shows the resource no longer satisfies the criteria for recognition. Or fourth, the building official declares the resource a hazard to public safety. The county must, excuse me, the county must follow appropriate procedures regarding a removal of resource from inventory because it is a land use decision. So, again, there's lots of state rule and county code that specifies the process we must follow. SHPO nonetheless recommends that the county, in the event of looking at a removal of a resource proposal, that we follow the OAR specifically, no matter what Deschutes County Code says. So, the, I think we pretty much meet it, but while we're in there changing the code and updating it, we will just, we'll make sure that we mirror state rule in this instance as well.
Zach, does that mean the house at the Vandevert Ranch is going, we'll remove that at a work session? Or is this just stuff that was amended?
This is, what I've discussed so far...
Sorry to be so confused.
Yeah, it's okay. This is exactly why we're talking about it now and have another work session. Feel free to answer any questions. As I shared, it took me a while, and I'm still wrapping my head around these proposals as well. The, so, the 2017 amendments were provided amendments to state code, to state rules, that the county must...
Okay.
...must follow. And so, we are now just mirroring state code and bringing that into our own county code.
I got it.
And I think for, really, besides the next two topics, that we pretty much meet what the state code says anyway, in one way or another, we're just crossing the Ts and dots and Is to make sure that it mirrors it as best as possible, is, yeah. All right, the next two items I'm going to discuss are the more substantive changes. The first one is that DLCD added several definitions. There are, rough count, about a dozen new definitions or amended definitions that were added to the 2017 rule, ranging from archaeological site, demolition, eligible contributing, historic resources, owner, et cetera. Deschutes County, for actually, most of these, doesn't have a definition, and it hasn't been an issue before, but just to make sure it doesn't come up, and again, we'd have to look at, we'd refer to state statute anyway, or state rules, if we didn't have those and we needed to. But we're just, we'll propose that we bring those into county code. And the reason that this one, or adding definitions, may or may not be somewhat more significant is for the word demolition. Deschutes County defines demolish, but not demolition. And although a small difference, how we define demolition may have an impact on how National Register property reviews are carried out. And so, I'll get to that in just a moment.
And it's just the difference between a verb and a noun.
The...
Right?
It, how we define demolish, we add demolish, it could be, I mean, it could easily just be demolish slash demolition, or what have you. State rules says demolition. We've used demolish. But again, how we define demolish is not how necessarily state rule defines demolition. So, the big item here, the, I don't know if this is the right term, but it seems like the elephant in the room with these amendments is, comes down to National Register properties and what the changes have done. Before 2017, Deschutes County processed alterations to National Register properties the same way we processed alterations or demolitions to Goal Five properties, locally listed properties. We treated them the same. If there's a nomination to the National Register, it was listed on that register. It became part of our package of sites that we reviewed, we reviewed as the county and the HLC. And that's based on how we defined, I believe it, quote, historic resource, historic resource. The 2017 rule changed that process, whether, for better or worse. They, SHPO and DLCD did this to clarify things. And in my personal humble opinion, it will, it changed things. It'll make it a little bit more confusing, but hopefully not if we can amend our code in a way that is, it'll be more lengthy, and it'll have more definitions. But the goal is to clear up any confusion with what our code says and what state rule says, and what the National Park Service expects of CLGs. And the, so, I'll read this here. "The amended OAR specifies that properties listed in the National Register after February 23rd, 2017 shall not be automatically designated to the county's Goal Five historic resource inventory or specifically regulated under Deschutes County Code without first designating the National Register site as part of our locally significant historic resource or adding additional protections specific in a separate category to National Register These are just my notes that I'm, from the memo, but, yeah.
Sorry, I was looking through here?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, again, the amended rule allows local governments to apply additional protections, and there is a baseline for protection that, again, ties back to how you define demolish or demolition and relocation. So, the baseline for National Register reviews, what the National Park Service expects CLGs to do, is that you, we are required to review demolition requests or relocation requests for National Register sites. If the county is interested or wants to amend the code to do so, we can add additional protections. And there's a couple of different ways we can do that. So, the upshot of all this is that, no matter what, we need to amend our code, our comprehensive plan, to keep two new lists for National Register sites. Those that were listed before February 2017, and those that were listed on or after the date of adoption in February 2017. For properties, for properties listed before the amendments, there's no change. It's a status quo for, in perpetuity. For sites listed afterward, and I believe that the Central Oregon Canal would fall under this category, the county, they're in new territory, and the county gets to, or has an opportunity to really define how we want to review or how we want to treat those sites. Is it just the bare minimum that we review them when an application has come forward to demolish the historic resource and/or relocate it? Or do we want to add additional layers of review or protection?
Yeah, that could be an issue with all the piping going on. I can just see that. And I can just envision a lot of public interest in that, another potential way to stop piping. So, I guess we need to define demolish then, in that case. And so, let me add a question to that. So, does this commission need to designate the Central Oregon Canal a local historic resource then?
That is a...
A housekeeping item.
Well, that's a question, right? Because right now, it is, it falls into this new category of something that is not on our Goal Five inventory. And it's, it falls into this new territory of...
Right.
Before, we would have treated it as, we are, you request to alter said historic landmark, there is a procedure and a process for that. Right now, it's not necessarily clear how the county would review such a site.
Yeah. And another question, is there a list of National Register listed properties in Deschutes County?
I have.
I know I have the Goal Five, but I don't know if I have a National Register listing.
Let's just see if I have one right here for you.
Yeah, it's in our, our website has that on, our strategic plan has that as well, but...
That's our historic sites, and then there's...
Federal land sites.
There's a whole bunch in there, you can look through there.
And I, so, through this discussion, I just, I just thought of something that we would have a, based on the way we define historic resource inventory, arguably, for any alterations of the Central Oregon Canal, we would treat it the same. But the question is, do we, we need, yeah, do we want to or not? So, Chair Harding-Jones, you're absolutely correct that, you know, this is the, this is the one amendment that could be a little bit more controversial or have more impact than the other ones, certainly.
Well, I see another issue potentially in that these National Register listed properties that are on federal land, under the jurisdiction of some federal agency, they may not know that these requirements are required, these could be required by the county, and I would think you're going to get some pushback unless you engage them right off the bat.
Yeah. Well, and one thing, I don't know if Nick or Peter can recall, or maybe the commission can, but for... I don't, I don't know if Nick or Peter can recall, or maybe the commission can, but for typically how we treat, there's, there's federal preemption for building permits or land use permits on federal land. So they, they're able to do their own thing as-
You can have the cabins at Paulina Lake.
Yeah, yeah, and so we, that's, that's a good topic to consider. I'm, and perhaps, one, one thing that I'm, I'm seeing through this, this amendment process that, that we're going through is, is another opportunity beyond what DLCD has provided in their amended rules, but an opportunity for the commission and staff and in our local community to, to suggest amendments to the Board of County Commission consideration that further clarify how we, how we review historic resources. So maybe that's another example where we say, on federal properties, this is the prescribed process that, that we look at. We'll make sure we're in line with state, state rules and statutes, but as much flexibility as we can, we can further provide guidance on how we do that. Because off the top of my head, I don't know if, how the federal preemption rule works for historic resources. I don't know if we've had an application to modify the Paulina Lake cabins or-
See, federal governments are supposed to consult with the local government, in this case, CLG, this group. The reality is, we don't, or, or rarely do.
It's elective of that jurisdiction.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Like, I mean, we did get a presentation on Paulina Lake cabins, but it happened ages after they-
They had decided to do it, right.
And, and I got the phone call from the Deschutes saying, why are we doing this again?
Yeah.
It's a matter of just educating the historic preservation-
It's outreach, it's another form of outreach.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. I think they're not against it, but the lives don't know. And it can be used as a weapon if someone doesn't like what the feds are doing regarding a property and, and then throws a code violation. So it's a benefit to involve the federal jurisdiction.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying.
Well, yeah, thanks for, for those comments.
And there's several.
Yes, there are.
I mean, I can't even really name how many. Forest Service BLM.
Well, those are the two biggies around here.
Yeah, two, yeah.
Zach, I just wanted to make one comment since you're talking about this and making these changes. You know how the last meeting that we had, the people came and they're going to fix that bridge down at the end of Tumalo Reservoir Road? I don't know if you have been out there, anybody wants to see what it looks like when they're covering up the canals? But it is pretty dramatic and it's been going on ever since down by Tumalo Creek. They've been coming through Tumalo, basically down Johnson Market Road. And they've gotten sort of over by my house now and they're headed toward the reservoir. And they cut a swath of land that's about as wide as this room. And they pull up every juniper and it's pretty, almost apocalyptic. And after, you know, you know what it's for and you know that the willows and the junipers were sucking up all that water, but it's a really big change. And there's a part of me now that understands why somebody wouldn't want that coming through their property. So just to think about it, because I, yes, changed the flavor of a couple houses in my neighborhood because they were covered with trees and now there's nothing there.
And there won't be.
And there won't be ever, and there's big, and they went right through the middle of fields and everything. So it's very interesting and they're almost at the bridge down there by the reservoir. So, the pipes are huge, it's very interesting. Sorry to change the subject, but that's sort of, it is interesting if you haven't seen it.
Yeah, I saw.
Yeah, it's crazy.
You could drive a car in it.
I know.
Nine foot diameter pipe or something.
Yeah.
Is that what it is, nine feet?
That's huge. And I saw them, I was there when they were welding. So it's one continuous pipe.
Corrugated or concrete?
No, it's PVC.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It's blue plastic, I mean, black plastic. Okay. Sorry Zach, you can go on now.
No, thank you. All right, so the, the last, the component two, the last component of the forthcoming amendments involve what I'm, I'm calling housekeeping amendments. They're, they're the, the things that regardless of the 2017 OAR rules, this is something that, that we should do anyway. And, and that is, and something we, we got approval from the, from SHPO to do for our CLG grant. And that's just, the same thing we, we do with our, our land use code is when we have, when, when a property changes or there's a, a new rule that we just, we add or remove a site based on, on that, on that change. So as you may recall, in 2016, the HLC reviewed an application to remove the historic structures of Klein Falls. And so that, that was approved and the, the power plant has now been removed. There, I do, I do believe that they have submitted or they, they've constructed some, an interpretation site and left some of the, the, I think a, a portion of the pin stock or something along those lines to commemorate what, 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 what once stood there. Nonetheless, Klein Falls is, is no longer there as the power plant is what was originally designated. So arguably Klein Falls, it should be taken off our Goal Five local inventory. It's, it's no longer a historic site and there isn't really anything, if there comes an alteration, there's nothing to alter. So I, I, staff suggests or proposes that at the very least, we amend our, our comprehensive plan to recognize that Klein Falls was once a historic site. It is no longer and here's why and what it once was, but have that in a separate section.
May also recommend you make some kind of a notation in the storyboard.
What's that?
The story maps, yeah.
Story maps, I'm sorry. So something to the effect that it's no longer on the list or it's been removed or something. So people don't drive there looking for it.
That's true.
Yeah.
Well, and that's, then a part of that too is, you know, if it's, you know, a historic or was a historic resource and it's not there any longer, I mean, you still want to identify it as having been one because then, you know, just because of its removal, it almost like it just disappears over time anyway. And so that's, I think that's all, the least we could do is to track.
To keep it on.
Yeah.
Just update the fact that, yeah, it's no longer there.
Right.
Absolutely. And then tied to what I just spoke to regarding the National Register sites and the two separate lists or categories, our comprehensive plan actually doesn't list the National Register sites in the county. We, we do have them on our, our story map on the county's website as well as the Historic Landmarks Commission's strategic plan. However, they aren't, they aren't in the comprehensive plan. So we, we still need to vet this among staff and make sure that it, it makes sense to do so. But one, one thing staff is considering is proposing a subsection of our comprehensive plan, Section 5.9 that deals with historic resources. Another subsection could be National Register sites, where we list those out. They're in our comprehensive plan, which is a little more formal or at least speaks to, ties back to how we, what, what review requirements there are in Deschutes County Code 2.28, the ordinance that governs these resources. So that, that is just another housekeeping amendment that we, we are considering and will, will likely suggest for consideration by the Historic Landmarks Commission. So again, a, an overview, we're looking at the next steps. Tonight was just a teaser. I hoped I, I gave you an idea of what's to come. And the, our next meeting on March 2nd, we'll have a, a second work session where I will ideally have a more specific list of the proposed amendments and how it may all look. Answer any further questions the commissioners may have and prepare the commission for a public hearing in May, which will involve, of course, public testimony and add, the commission will be, will, will be asked to either continue the public hearing or close the public hearing and move to deliberations. But from May 4th on that date or, or subsequent meetings, the commission will be asked to formally recommend a, a motion to the, to the Board of County Commissioners on the, the proposed amendments. And modifications can be made, suggestions, what have you. Ideally, we can work out those suggestions by commissioners tonight or, or in March or on, in May as well. But the Board of County Commissioners will be the final decision body for these amendments as they, they determine what, what our county code says and what our comprehensive plan says as well. So depending on how things go, we, we may be looking at meeting with the board in, at the earliest late May, if not in, into the, the summer months. And have a, potentially a, a new, new updated code. Fingers crossed by the end of the CLG session in August of this year.
Thank you for working so hard on this.
Yeah. Any questions or thoughts, advice? If not tonight, I'm sure you all take it home and read it diligently and provide lots of notes.
Recommend we kind of stew on over the next month if saying anything.
Yeah, good, good question. I, if, I would recommend looking at, at, at least briefly, looking at the model ordinance and looking at the, the blue text or what's highlighted in blue. That is what the state says is required. As part of being a CLG, we have to have more or less what that blue text is saying. So-
So would we be comparing their text recommendations to ours and, and like almost side by side in a way?
Yes. That's, that's going to be my job, yeah. That's, I'm hoping by, by the end of the month, I will, I'll have time to sit down and look at the model ordinance versus our code and then create a, and a, yeah, a matrix that basically looks at that. The differences there. Perhaps what I'm envisioning is a, a draft updated Deschutes County Code 2.28 with track changes within that document that I'll provide you. And then if you, if- Because there's, they purposely leave out holes for the, the county to fill in. And there's, there's certain, certain definitions that they look to the local jurisdiction. How do you want to define this? You know, here are your options, sort of thing. The, the third document or third attachment in your, your meeting packet, Planning for Historic Preservation in Oregon, this has been out for, for a while, February 2018, but it's, it's a really good comprehensive look at the 2017 rule, what changed. And then just an overview of what, what is expected or what the requirements are for protecting identified historic resource, inventorying historic resources, determining significance, removal of a, of a structure from a resource. So that's, that's another good document. To be honest, I, March, the next work session, you will have more documents that you'll be able to sink your teeth in a little bit more and really good idea.
There's another teaser.
Yeah. Stay tuned.
Thank you.
Yeah, any other questions?
Will we be voting then, in May, on anything?
Correct.
Be the, the goal for that meeting?
Yep, so the commission will be, will be charged with making a formal recommendation. So that'll be a vote by the commission to, to recommend either approval or amendments or that the commission doesn't move forward with the suggested amendments, what have you. But yes, we are looking for the commission to make a formal recommendation. Correct. So yeah, you're, you're making a recommendation. They, in theory, could, yes?
It's just a recommendation.
All right.
Item number five, Preservation Month Planning.
I got an email today from Kelly Cannon Miller. And the only thing she talked about was the Archaeology Roadshow, which is May 23rd. And she wanted just to give me to give her an update, but I told her I didn't know anything.
Okay, May 23rd?
May 23rd is the Archaeology Roadshow, that's the only thing that I know so far. Yeah.
I have a feeling Redmond Parks and Rec will probably do the Tethro Homestead.
Oh, yeah, I talked to Margaret as well and she's doing that again.
Do it again.
Yes, I'm not going to do it this year.
No more penny candy?
No more penny candy. No more dressing up.
The, and this is something that Commissioner Electe wanted to be on the agenda tonight. Unfortunately, she can't, she can't be here tonight to share her thoughts about it. But she, she in email expressed interest that we, our HLC, our commissioners have played a, a big part in leading the effort to create May Historic Preservation Month. And she wanted to know what, what the status was. And it sounds like Kelly Cannon Miller is, is tracking it. I haven't seen any invitations to, to host anything yet.
I talked with her briefly a week and a half ago and both of us were kind of sheepishly saying, what are you having on time? All we want to do is just set a, a date to kind of start things up really. I mean, it's not-
And I know that the kickoff last year was at the post office, but I almost feel like, gosh, it should be there again. It was just such a great place. I don't know if you all thought of that was. It was just such a fabulous place to be, but I don't even know what the theme is or anything, so.
Kelly was throwing around an idea of like, like place-based memories that, that helps elderly with, you know, remembrance and stuff like that. That, you know, as, as you, you know how some, some of our themes are more like, you know, kid-focused or family-focused or whatever? And she was thinking of almost gearing it towards, you know, the, the older generations that, you know, they're, you know, forgetting things and this, you know, going, I mean, for lack of a better phrase.
What are we talking about?
Yeah. But doing something along, along the lines of that. I mean, I don't know what kind of idea she's got, we just need to have a meeting.
If you can generalize it.
Yeah, exactly. So that, that's sort of what she was-
But I know she's thinking about it, I know we all are.
Yeah, and it's just, it's just a matter of setting a date and started, start throwing the ideas out. So, and we're not super late yet, but I can, I, I just need to call her up and see if we can just reserve a time on a lunch.
I'll be glad to help.
Would you?
Yeah, I'll be glad to help with this.
My time will be limited again like it was last year. I didn't hardly do much of anything. I think I was there for a couple of meetings and didn't get to do any of the kickoff stuff either. And I don't see this, this year being a whole lot different. So.
We'll get there.
But yeah, I mean, well, I think between the, the, between Kelly and myself and we'll see who else we can kind of drum up that helped in the past. I mean, Redmond's been really helpful as well, so, yeah.
Maybe Margaret can do some more issue.
Yeah.
The, a couple of things to consider. We do have CLG funding for- We do have CLG funding for May Preservation Month. What that involves is really up to, up to our HLC. But last year we, we paid for, I'm spacing on the individual's name, but the, we had a speaker from the National Trust of Historic Preservation.
Yeah.
And he, so that, that was a fairly significant speaker fee, but we have funding to do that again this year as well. So if you know of anybody or please pass those along, those ideas to me and I'll, I'll reach out early to those individuals and materials, rental of a, a site, et cetera, we have the CLG funds to cover that. And that's what they're earmarked for, so keep that in mind.
Okay.
Do we know how much for those that are participating, just so they're aware of what the budget is?
I, I believe it's right around $2,000 right now.
Good.
Another teaser.
So that's great, $2,000 of eligible funding for just for Preservation Month, yeah.
Thank you for that.
That's grown up since.
I'm sorry?
That's more than I think we've had in the past years.
Yes, it was. We, as part of our news, our, this CLG grant, without having a, a marquee project like we did last year with the, the historic resource inventory or the RLS, we spread money out or increased the amounts in some of our tried and true CLG initiatives.
Well, and I would suggest if this, if Sisters has some marquee event or program or something of that nature.
I'd be good in Sisters this year.
Be great to really help share that money with the City of Sisters to promote it.
Any staff or other comments?
I have, I have other comments, but once, once we're ready for that, are we, we're done with the Preservation Month?
I, I think so.
Are y'all done with Preservation Month? We are, over here.
Come on.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. We're tired.
I just have a, a couple of comments here. One, Sharon Leckie, Commissioner Leckie shared with me that the State Heritage Conference is in Corvallis this year, April 22nd through the 24th. She plans on attending. If other commissioners are interested, let me know. We can work out registration costs and travel reimbursements and whatnot, again, through CLG funds. And I look, I'll say that I, I look forward to the next couple of months working on this, this code audit and amendments that we're looking at. It'll be a, a big project for this commission and something that, as far as I know and coordination with, with SHPO, there, there aren't actually any other jurisdictions that are, are working on this right now. So there's other that are considering, considering it, but we're, we're the first ones that are actually taking it on. So that's.
That's exciting.
Yeah. That'll, that'll be, and again, the, the amendments or the rules are already in place. It's just we're the first ones to sort of bring it in, bring it into our code.
Pretty normal of a timeframe for something like that to start in 2017 and.
It's interesting, isn't it? Yeah. I, I felt like I was behind the, on it.
You actually found out you're first.
Yeah. It's a.
It's important stuff we're doing here.
Yeah. The, the, I think a lot of jurisdictions were waiting on the model ordinance and that just came out in October. So that's changes. And something, planting a seed for the long-term here, last year, I don't, if I recall correctly, we didn't get an opportunity to do an HLC retreat. I think we did that in late 2017 when we went down to South County. But that is something staff is willing to, to coordinate and if there's an interest, so maybe, maybe as a somewhat of a celebration if we get through this, these amendments, we can look at a, a site visit or a retreat later in the year before it gets too cold. Yeah, thanks.
I know. Cupcakes.
Okay. Our commissioners, just since this is recorded, Nick Leelak, Deschutes County Community Development Director, just for the record there, lots of updates, I just want to give you a snapshot. Number one, I'm just want to, I want to say I'm, I'm so grateful that so many of you are interested in continuing to serve for another term. I understand Ben went through quite the recruitment process and turnover and changes and I'm not that familiar with all of it. All I know is I'm thankful that, I, it sounds like everybody's going to be here. Maybe there's some swapping of some roles and maybe there's a new person or we'll figure that out as we go forward, but the, on balance, our commission will stay whole going forward, which is, I think, great.
I just gotta do some math and I think, it's been eight years, right? Twenty twelve, thirteen?
Yeah, yeah, ten or eleven, I thought, when we changed it.
Yeah, that's crazy.
And we don't have term limits for, for Historic Landmarks Commissioners, whereas we do with planning commissioners, for example. So they turn over fairly regularly. So that was my first update. The second, and, and this doesn't involve the Landmark, the Landmarks Commission, but I still like you to be aware of some of the other things that are happening. There's a big joint Board of County Commission, Planning Commission meeting. It'll be in here next week, talking about non-prime resource lands, wildfire mitigation planning, big topic there and update on, on our work plan, talking about the Board of County Commissioners, annual goals and objectives, any other coordination issues that they have. We haven't had a need for the board to meet with the Landmarks Commission for, for some time, but that's not to say that should there, should the need arise, we wouldn't do that. They're working on some pretty dynamic projects. And so we'll, that, that coordination meeting is, is going to be helpful. I'd just like to give you that update. The legislative session kicked off today, just to, I'm not aware of any bills that, that apply to the Historic Landmarks Commission or to historic preservation planning at all, but we still track and we monitor and we're, we, we follow those closely. So just to give you that, if, should anything come up, we'll be sure to keep you informed of that. We're going to be in the process of kicking off our work plan for the next fiscal year here, this next, we're, we're already working on accomplishments for last year and we're beginning to draft the pieces. But I think what's important for the Landmarks Commission to know is really the big, big, big project for us for the next four to five years, likely launching in the fall, is going to be the comprehensive plan update. Begin with a multi-month, just planning the plan, creating the scope, hiring consultants, going through all those pieces, and then launching a, a multi-year project and then we have a multi-year implementation program. So a lot of stuff there. It certainly could include Goal Five and potentially historic resources, revisiting those programs as part of we go, as part of going through that. So just wanted to give you the update that that's going to be one of the, the, the big projects we have going forward. Growing county, dramatically changing population, all kinds of things. The timing is really right. The current one we have is about 10 years old and goodness knows if you can imagine.
Oh, yeah.
There was only the, the iPhone two then, or I'm, I'm just kidding, whatever it was. Just the whole world has changed.
Slide rules.
So that, it's almost historic. But in any event, big, big changes and we'll keep you in the loop on all of that. Since we met last time, Nicole Mardell, you may have met or worked with Nicole a bit. She left us, she was an associate planner, she's now in the City of Sisters as a principal planner, working just below the Community Development Director, Patrick Davenport. So we're down that position, we're not likely to fill that position and instead hold on to that money and hire consultants. We have so many specialized projects going forward that I think we're going to be better served by keeping, in addition to the three of us here, we also have Tanya Saltzman and Peter Russell to hire consultants for the expertise that we really need on projects, just like historic preservation and I hate to.
What about Matt Martin?
He's in current planning. He transitioned back to current planning for development review. But just like we don't have a historic preservationist on staff, we do the best we can as we look at, you know, biological inventories for wildlife or those types of things. We, we need to hire consultants and recognize that we're not always the experts to prepare some of those plans, et cetera, going forward. So we've got a lot of areas where we can utilize them. Finally, the last point, and I think this is something we, we need to do, we can do a better job of, not that it's a big deal and this commission is, I think, well-served by CLG funding, but each year as we adopt our budget, I think it's, it's going to be important for, for us to inform this commission of what kind of the budget is we have for historic preservation projects going forward. CLG is going to be a big part of that, but just so you can plan accordingly, you know, if we have, for example, a training budget for commissioners, either individually or as a whole, as an entire body, just so you can plan accordingly. Hey, I think I'm going to go to the Main Street Conference if we have funding for that and based on where it's, it's located, or the CLG Training Conference or things like that. So you can plan your year accordingly and know what resources that we have that either pay for the, the conference or tra, training or lodging in, in part or in whole. And if we can share that information with you early in the fiscal year, I think it'll benefit all of us. And we're doing the same thing with the Planning Commission going forward. So lots of updates. I'm happy to answer any question, but we haven't met for a while and I like to do what I can to keep you informed of a lot of, a lot of things that are going on.
Send everybody the updates.
Great, you're welcome.
Thank you all for giving up your evening to come sit.
Oh, this is what, we, we love this. You're welcome, but we, we love this. If, if you haven't, if, you should all be on the weekly updates. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, I love it.
And at the bottom, what we do is we, we, we include items where we, our department has something on the agenda. So if you haven't done it, you can click on that and it takes you right to the agenda and you can find the materials. We get questions all the time, the people do it and say, so where's the document? And we're more than happy to help. That's exactly why we send it out, is to give the community and our commission as much information as we can that is useful to you. So, thank you. That's all I had.
Planning Commission Training.
Oh, yeah, that's a good, yeah, thank you, Zach, good point. One project we talked about a couple of years ago, we're trading, creating the manuals for each commission. We have a very, very solid draft for the Planning Commission as a starting point. They're going to begin to talk about it this month. And then what we want to do is create a subgroup of the, of the Landmarks Commission. This has just been one of these projects, but it's been slow-going for a long time, but we really want to commit to working with the Landmarks Commission on that as well. The Planning Commission got a preview of it last, last week, two weeks ago, and very, very pleased with, with the initial first draft. And now we're going to begin to work with them. I'm sure it'll take at least a couple of months to fine-tune that. And they're very interested then in having the Board of County Commissioners kind of give it their okay so that the commission, even though it's developed by you and really adopted by you, that you know that you have the support of the, of the elected body for standing, standard operating procedures and anything else that's not just clearly defined in code already or that interprets county code, such as the election of officers every year. When might that happen?
Yeah.
So, although we can always, we can be flexible, so. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Anything out there, anything else anyone has to contribute? Motion to adjourn? Second? You can't make the motion.
Second?
Thanks, Dennis, you saved us.
No, we had a, we had a meeting and they said.
Seven seventeen.